Good evening and welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, June 9. If you are watching live on Monday, June 9, we have a call-in number at 769-1677. Feel free to call in if you have comments or questions. Our next regular meeting is in two weeks on Monday, June 23 at 8:00 p.m., with a work session at 7:00. And I had a number of announcements to make. The first is we met in work session this evening with the folks from Benchmark Senior Living, the project that has been proposed for the wooded lot adjacent to Metis Church, and they have completed the process of submitting the documents associated with the Department of Transportation argument about the wall and the cut-through in the wall. So, all of those documents have been submitted. They are all up on our website at Pleasantville-NY.gov if you want to dig into it. It is the view of all of us, including our planning consultant, who's given a memo to this effect, that Benchmark has satisfactorily addressed the comments of the Department of Transportation, which in large part were a clarification of facts that were already on the table. The thrust of the discussion is that the proposed entry area in the low section of the wall where the driveway is would be 15 feet wider on both sides. If you're interested in looking at the layout of that, the plans, as they say, are posted on our website at Pleasantville-NY.gov. So, we continue to examine all the issues associated with that, and it is our preliminary intention, not a guarantee, but a preliminary intention, to vote on the Benchmark project in two weeks at our meeting on June 23rd. That's two weeks from today. So, anyone who is focused on that issue should be aware that the Board's intention is to include the vote on the potential zoning change for Benchmark, two weeks from today, Monday, July 23. A couple of other things to report.
June.
Oh, I'm sorry, June, yes. Did I say July?
Yep.
June, Monday, June 23, two weeks from today. Thank you for correcting me. The Pleasantville Music Festival is taking place on Saturday, July 12. The details are at PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com. They have recently announced the slate of performers, which includes Ian Hunter and the Rant Band, Amy Helm and the Handsome Strangers. Amy Helm is the daughter of Levon Helm. Auguste Annas Scar is a whole bunch of people. I talked to Saul Skolnick today. He's the executive director of the music festival, and he feels strongly that there is something for everybody. So, get yourself to PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com. Tickets will go on sale soon. We look forward to a great day on Saturday, July 12, for the Pleasantville Music Festival. A couple of other things I wanted to report. I went to a meeting last week at Pace University regarding the work they're doing over at their campus. Many of you are aware that Pace is in the process of a significant campus redevelopment of their Pleasantville campus that will increase the number of dormitories, as well as a lot of other campus improvements on the Pleasantville campus, and they will close the dormitories they currently own and operate in the Village of Briar Cliff Manor and sell that property. The overall enrollment at Pace is anticipated to remain about the same. It's just that it will be all consolidated on their property in Pleasantville. So, a lot of work is going on right now over at Pace, and it is going to accelerate now that school is out and the summer is in full swing. The Kessel Campus Center will be substantially renovated, and a big part of it will be closed for the better part of the next nine months to a year. They're building new dormitories, and it's their intention that in the fall of 2015, the students who would otherwise have lived on the Briar Cliff Campus will come to the Pleasantville campus. So, there have been a lot of concerns and a lot of care gone into the planning of all of this. The Pleasantville campus is actually outside the Village of Pleasantville, just outside our borders, and so it is a town of pleasant matter to review the planning. But I think it's fair to say exciting developments at Pace, the result of which will create a much more full-spectrum college campus there, and I think that will benefit the village as well. So, that's the report on Pace. Farmer's Market is now outside Saturday mornings. Great scene down there. We encourage you to come and visit. And the last thing I wanted to mention was that, as we have said before, as we start thinking more about the hurricane season in the late summer and early fall, it's a great time to remind everyone that we have contracted with an emergency notification system called Code Red. If you go to the Pleasantville website, the government website at Pleasantville-NY.gov, in the left-hand column, you can click on the Code Red logo. That will bring you into the registration. If you haven't already done it, then you can sign up for notifications to your landline, to your cellphone, to your email, for texts, so that wherever you are, if we send out an emergency message, you can get it. That would have been an enormous help during Hurricane Sandy, when lots of people were living elsewhere and lots of people didn't have access to their regular phone service, to be able to get information about what was going on in other ways. So, we very, very, very much encourage you to get yourself to Code Red if you haven't already done so and enroll. It's a system that we will only use for emergencies. This is not the system to remind you your water bill is due. We have one for that, too, which you can also sign up for at Pleasantville-NY.gov. But Code Red is a really important and really big benefit to everybody. So, Patty, why don't you report the plans for a test of that system?
I'd had conversations this morning with people who administer the program for us at Code Red, and we are launching a test call next Wednesday sometime around noon, and that call will go out to all registrants in our databases, whether they registered by telephone or gave us a text address or an email address. And we will send out a general notification that this is only a test. We will try at that point in time to see what falls out of the system in terms of disconnects and what numbers are valid, and we intend to do that on a regular basis throughout the year, just to be sure that our databases are up to date.
And note also that you might receive a phone call even if you haven't subscribed to the system, because the system has access to the 911 telephone numbers.
Yes, it does.
So, if your home and phone number are built into the 911 emergency system, which is the case for almost every home, you will get a phone call from the Code Red system. The huge advantage of registering for the system is that in addition to that phone call to your landline phone, you can register other means of communication. And I can speak from personal experience that in the period of time when many of us were out of power, we were also out of telephone service, and it would have been a tremendous advantage for lots of people to be able to get a text message to their phone or something of that kind. So, you're likely in the system because of the 911 phone numbers, but you're not in the system for the other kinds of notifications, and it's a huge advantage to get them that way.
Correct.
All right. Test call coming out. What was that date again, Patty?
The 18th, Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 18th, test call for Code Red. So, if you don't get a call, go and sign up, because you'll realize you have been left A number of you may have noticed that there are ribbons on some of the trees downtown. Those are ribbons that were installed by the National Alliance on Mental Illness for their May 2014 Mental Health Awareness Campaign, and they have provided a certificate of appreciation to the Village of Pleasantville and likely to every other community of the many in Westchester who participated. So, we thank NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, for their efforts to support improved mental health care. Anybody else have anything to add to the mix?
No.
Okay. With that, the first matter on our agenda is a public hearing regarding local law amending Village Code Chapter 173 Vehicles and Traffic, Section 173-68, Schedule 20, loading zones as follows. Adding on the south side of Manville Road, that is the side of Manville Road right in front of the Burns Theater, all hours, all day, a no parking requirement from a point 121 feet east of Wheeler Avenue to a point 159 feet easterly therefrom. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Second?
Third.
Welcome to the public hearing. So, the brief background to this is that the Burns Film Center applied to the Planning Commission for a site plan modification that would allow them to build two additional theaters. These are small theaters, 30, 40 seats, something like that, that will sit on top of the existing addition that holds theaters two and three. So, the result of that is that it engaged, at the Planning Commission level, many issues having to do with the operation of the theater, both the impacts of the two new small theaters, as well as the impacts that have existed with the existing building, especially having to do with pickup and drop-off, not only of movie patrons, but earlier in the day of school kids and school buses and the like. The result of that was a site plan resolution by the Pleasantville Planning Commission that requires an improved loading zone in the area in front of the theater. The result of this would be that we would rearrange the parking on Manville Road, and Patty, you want to describe exactly what happens?
I do, yeah. Currently in front of the Burns, there's no parking, basically under the traffic signal and a certain distance to the south and north of that area. What the Planning Commission has required be done here is that we sign that as a loading zone area and take one spot that is just further east or further away from Wheeler Avenue up on Manville Road and make that part of the loading zone as well, where there's currently a metered space. So, one metered space would be removed. This loading zone would extend where it does right now in front of the Burns and go one space further up Manville Road. That's essentially the effect of it.
Okay. So, the Planning Commission resolution, which provides site plan approval for these two small theaters, one containing 45 seats, the other containing 35 seats, also include a number of requirements, including some agreements the Burns has made to provide additional parking for their staff, as well as for theater patrons after hours, including at Lamb Design and in the Media Arts Lab parking lot. But I will read directly from the Planning Commission resolution that says, "Whereas in response to concerns regarding the drop-off of patrons in front of the building causing traffic issues, the applicant had discussions with the village regarding the creation of a drop-off area in front of the JBFC on Manville Road. And whereas in response to concerns regarding the idling of buses in front of the film center, the application had discussion with the Village of Pleasantville Police Department regarding laws." The result of this is that the site plan requires that a qualified attendant shall be stationed outside the front entrance of the theater, regardless of weather conditions, to prevent patrons from double parking in front of the theater, to aid during drop-offs from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on all days that the theater is operating, and to inform patrons of available parking in nearby lots, and also to have a handout with a map showing the locations of the lots. So, that's the thrust of the discussion. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment? I think there might be.
Yeah.
Enter and sign in, please. We need to bring you to the mic, and you have to report who you are and where you live, even though we know.
Okay. My name is Salvatore Cidicano. I own the building on a corner of Wheeler and Manville. I live on Brentwood Drive in Pleasantville. Was born here, and I'm still here, and I'll probably die here. Anyway, I guess I didn't understand completely what you were doing as far as the parking in front of my building. The first rumor I heard was that they're taking the parking spaces away from us so the buses could pull up there and park
No.
while they're dropping off, which I'm finding out differently.
Yes.
On the phone call, I found out differently also.
Right.
So, to make me understand, you're not taking my two parking spaces. That's all I have left on my whole building, which goes seven stores.
You're taking one.
Yeah? Pardon me?
But Sam, let me be clear. There was a request to make one of those handicapped, because they're losing a handicap space. There was a request to convert one of those to handicap space.
So, those two spaces remain, but one would become handicap?
Which is probably...
Do we have to make the handicap there? Can't we just make it in front of where it is now? You're only taking one space, right?
No.
Where the handicap space is now, is that what they're taking?
Yeah, we'd have to push it further up the block.
Yeah, just put one handicap.
We're taking two. We're taking one regular and one handicap.
No, they're taking a space, and you have to convert...
It is the handicap.
We're only taking away one parking.
But technically, you're taking away one parking space, but you're...
One metered space.
One metered space, but you're putting, you're taking away a metered space to make it a handicap space.
So, there already is a handicap space.
It is a handicap space. The one they're taking away.
The space we're taking away is a handicap space, so we have to put the handicap space somewhere else.
We could put it up another one, but it's a little, the elevation's a little tough there.
So, you're only losing one space. You're only eliminating one space.
Correct.
And that's going to end up in front of our building, which we only have two parking spaces there now.
Well, it's not going to, those two spaces remain.
But one is a handicap.
Yeah, but one's going to be handicap.
So, the question would...
So, technically, there's only one space going to be there for the public.
Right. So, the question would be, could we move the handicap space one in front of where it is?
Where it is now, just move it up one.
Right.
And that way, I would remain with my two spaces, and there's no problem.
What do you think of that, Patty?
I think we originally had it that way.
So, it would be up close to the church lot?
Yeah.
That is correct.
Just one space up.
It would be one space up from the church.
That's where they originally were going to put that. They were going to move it up there. But I think that there was a problem with an incline.
It's flatter, you know, at the bottom, obviously, yeah.
Down closer to Wheeler.
All right.
But I think it's possible.
We can look into that.
Yeah, because...
That is a good point.
You know, my whole building, we only have those two parking spaces, and I hate to lose any. Not so much for me, but for my tenants.
I mean, so do we.
And they complained to us, and I know we need parking spaces, because years ago I was on the Parking Commission.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I know we need parking spaces. Why eliminate any? But I know, I understand what you have to do with the buses. They have to be able to drop off.
Yeah, and honestly, it's not, partly it's the buses, but partly it's the business of people dropping someone off at the theater.
It's the drop-off with the people, yeah.
So, the idea the Planning Commission had, and I think is clearly valid, is to actively manage that curbside
Yeah.
so that people don't linger there. They're just dropping someone off.
There's somebody out there every night.
I often see, you know, someone's dropping off an older travel mate and wants to drop them off, so they have to walk back to the parking lot or something like that.
Yeah.
So, I think that part of it is ultimately a benefit. Obviously, it's, nobody likes to lose a parking space.
I can understand the whole thing.
Yeah. All right. So, we will...
All I'm asking is that instead of making that handicap in front of our building, which we only have two parking spaces
Right.
could we move it up one space from where it is, and then it wouldn't affect us?
So, we will ask that question. I can't guarantee that we can do that, but if we can, that seems like a reasonable choice. What do you think, Patty?
Yeah.
I also think, actually, from the standpoint, I don't know about the incline, but from the standpoint of arrival into that parking space and dealing with potentially mobility-limited patron, it's an easier space to navigate into.
It's actually easier across the street, believe it or not, by Century 21.
Right.
Not Century, I'm sorry, the Caldwell Banker
Right.
on that corner to do something, and that perpendicular spot would probably be better.
But the idea is that that space doesn't only, what is that? That space has to service other places.
The handicap space, right.
So, it's not just servicing, if you're putting it, if you're putting it up towards the church, you know, you're servicing this, you know, what, this one's across the street. They still have to come back and go across the street.
I know what you're saying, though. For pulling in, it would actually be easier.
Be easier.
Now, we're talking about...
I agree.
Because you're actually pulling in through the loading zone.
Right.
So, we can look into it in some way.
Okay. I think that's a good point, Sam, and if we can do that, I'm inclined to say we would.
Appreciate it. That's all I was, yeah.
Yeah.
The original reason I was coming was because I had heard that we were losing both parking spaces.
No, you're not.
So, the buses got unloaded.
You're not losing either one of them.
Just a rumor.
That's fine.
Thank you, though.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll give you five of them. They just don't get to just pick.
We'll give you five bike spots.
All right.
Put little cars in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Sam.
So, are they still doing, if I remember correctly, the original was a, was there a cutout for the pull-in? Were we changing the current...
No, not at this point.
There is in the streetscape improvements that we've talked about, but not on the radar screen at the moment.
So, the cost of this is what?
Just moving the signs.
Sign, sign.
Just moving signs?
Just a sign plan.
Right.
And codifying this, which is...
Do we need to mark the pavement to show that it's a loading zone?
Yes. Well, it's a good question. I don't know if it will...
I don't think that was part of this. I mean, I have to ask Jeff that question.
And the village is paying for this?
It's a dropped curb now, so maybe a little hard.
But if you want it to be done, used the way that I'm talking about using it, then it should be marked that way.
I think that's a good point.
Well, we don't necessarily mark the pavement. We put up a sign. I mean...
We were thinking of doing some crosshatch, too.
You should do a crosshatch.
I think it's going to work better.
Not totally.
I mean, Jeff would be the guy that knows, you know, crosshatching frequently means an area where you're not allowed to drive in.
But the buses will know that they can.
But it's not just buses. It's also car patrons in the evening.
That's mainly what it is.
Yeah.
So, the village is, I know it's probably not a big cost, but the village is paying for this.
I haven't addressed that.
Meaning striping, movement signs, new signs.
I don't know that there's any striping involved, but maybe there is. I'm more than happy to ask the Burns to pay for that, and I can't imagine there being any problem with that.
Public street, we'd have to...
I mean, I'm sure they'd be happy to assist with that, but I think the costs are minimal, but I think it's legitimate.
I just, you know...
A legitimate point, absolutely.
Services, just them.
A dollar, a dollar is a dollar.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any further comment? Any comments from anyone who wanted to call in at 769-1677?
I just wanted to make a comment that I made in work session and I should make publicly that is that I think the Planning Commission did address a lot of the situations here that were concerning to a lot of residents, and that was one that the parking was never identified for people. Oh, they could park, you know, in various different places. When the Burns first, you know, had the application in to build the original Jacob Burns Film Center, and that was always a problem, that patrons weren't being directed to park the right way. So, the Planning Commission kind of took care of that. And then also the idling buses, and I've been, you know, at times when you're going down the street and there's four big school buses taking up all the parking, idling, it's not a good situation. So, they've taken care of it in this site plan development here. So, I think they did a good job. I just wish there was some type of payment in lieu of, which we can discuss another time.
We're working on. All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, all right. The public hearing is closed. Go to the resolutions. Number 92, Colleen.
Resolve the pre-check register dated June 9, 2014, covering electronic transfer check numbers 1481 through 1531 and pre-check numbers 78029 through 78060 for fiscal year 2014-15 has been reviewed, and they are hereby approved as listed below. For fiscal year 2014 through 15, from the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Refuge Fund, the Pool Fund totaling $281,596.38. And further resolve the pre-check register dated June 9, 2014, covering pre-check numbers 77993 through 78028 for fiscal year 2013-14 has been reviewed, and they are hereby approved as listed below, coming from the General Fund, the, excuse me, the General Fund, the Special Purpose Fund, the Water Fund, the Refuge Fund, and the Pool Fund totaling $34,717.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions about the check register? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Minutes, number 93.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meetings held on Monday, April 28, and May 12, 2014, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the two sets of minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendations of the Village Justice, hereby approves James Lydon to an unpaid internship with the Village Court Office for the 2014 summer session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, James. He is participating in the Pleasantville High School Senior Internship Program, and we get benefit of a talented young man with an impressive resume for six weeks in the Village Court.
Great kid.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
How apropos that Steve is getting Brian's favorite resolution.
Yeah, I told him about this.
Oh, you did.
I did.
Oh, you didn't have to call in.
I did.
Brian's got a dartboard out.
Yeah. Steve, number 95.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Administrator to sign the SPCA agreement that provides, that, excuse me, that provides shelter for seized stray and homeless dogs and cats as per the terms set forth in the agreement dated June 1, 2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, what this adds up to is an annual payment by the Village of Pleasantville to the SPCA of $4,778.28. It has been the subject of much discussion
Too much discussion.
in the past, the issue being that in some years, the ASPCA doesn't have to do very much.
Anything, and he's right about that.
Well, I don't know that there has been a year when there was nothing, but the bottom line is that we're required to have some sort of a service in place for this, and the ASPCA provides this service not only to us, but to many others, and this is the mechanism by which they continue to be able to provide it. So...
It just, you know, I have to say this for past trustee Scarstadt, that it is an exorbitant amount of money for sometimes literally doing nothing. We've had years of nothing, and I know we were required to do this, but $4,778.28 a year, monthly installments of $398.19 for nothing, so...
I agree with you.
But we have to do it.
I agree with you, except that there clearly is a cost attached to being capable of doing something if needed 24/7, and that's part of what we're paying for. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Brian, are you watching?
I hope so.
Number 96.
I did that for you, Brian.
Colleen.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from, excuse me, Guyon Street residents to hold a block party on Saturday, July 26, 2014, from 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and from residents on Dogwood Lane for June 21, from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a good time on Guyon and Dogwood. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Joni Ehrlich to the position of Coordinator of Senior Citizen Services effective June 2, 2014, at a salary of $66,300. Said appointment is subject to the rules and regulations of the Westchester County Department of Human Resources. That includes a probationary period of not less than 12 weeks to a maximum of 52 weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Joni Ehrlich has been providing this service as Coordinator of Senior Citizen Services since the retirement of Virginia Pancotti, and this resolution reflects the, her having left the last hurdle of this civil service system.
That is correct. She had scored well enough on her exam to be appointed probationary now for a year, so I want to congratulate her and hope that, you know, we continue to have success with to have success with her at the head of the program.
Likewise, from all of us. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number 98, Jonathan.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the provisional appointment of Kristin Saras as Office Assistant of Financial Support in the Clerk, Court Clerk Office effective June 2, 2014, at a salary of $46,319. Permanent appointment is subject to being appointed from the Civil Service List of the Office of Assistance/Financial Services and serving a mandatory probationary period of not less than 12 weeks to a maximum of 52 weeks, as per the rules and regs of Westchester County's Department of Human Resources.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this reflects a rearrangement after retirement?
Well, this is actually addressing some of the audit inquiries we had about segregation duties in the court office.
Right.
We've had only one person manage that office for quite some time, and we were able to reorganize our finance department and our staff after some retirements upstairs, and it afforded us an opportunity to bring in another full-time person to help with managing the court office. So we're delighted to have Kristin. She's been with us about eight years now as a part-time employee, so she knows her way around the court. She's, she did sit for the civil service exam, so hopefully when those results come out, we'll have an opportunity to, to give her as well a probationary appointment.
Now, is she one of the two up in the office on the third floor?
She is.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, the comments of the auditors had nothing to do with any indication of any malfeasance.
No, no, no.
Simply the idea that in, in a perfect world, there ought to be some checks and balances in every office that handles money. So Kristin, as Patty mentioned, had only been a part-time person for a period of quite a few years, and we're now happy to add her to the ranks of full-time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 99.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village of Pleasantville to apply for a New York State liquor license in conjunction with the Pleasantville Music Festival.
Is there a second?
Second.
If this news encourages you to come on Saturday, July 12, that would be the Pleasantville Music Festival. Get thee to PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. We are grateful again, as we have been for some years running, to, to the good folks over at Captain Lawrence. They are participating again as a sponsor, have been tremendously helpful to us for a very long time, and also tremendously generous to us. So thank you to those folks. Very, very much appreciated support of the Pleasantville Music Festival.
Did we vote?
Did we vote? We voted, didn't we?
You did?
100 loading zone.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby amends a local law amending the Village Code Chapter 173 Vehicles and Traffic, Section 173-68, Schedule 20, loading zone as follows: On Manville Road South, all hours, all days, from a point 121 feet east of Wheeler Avenue to a point 159 feet easterly therefrom.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is the...
Well, can't we put in, can't we, you know, what about the parking spaces?
Yeah, does that need to be reflected here?
Well, the location of the handicap space is not specified here, so there's nothing in the resolution that would need to change one way or another.
The other one wasn't either. The code doesn't really address them by space.
Right. I mean, that's an administrative decision.
That's correct.
And if we can put the, I do think if we can put the handicap space where we discussed with Sam, that would be advantageous.
I understand.
So we could approve this without that?
Yes.
This is just the zone itself.
That's correct.
Correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. That is the last resolution on our docket for tonight. Is there any new business or any further comment from the public? 769-1677 is our calling.
Well, I just, I would like to just close in memory of two very special Village of Pleasantville people that passed away this past week. Jerry DeRosa, who was just one of the last great gentlemen on this planet, and Elizabeth Parati, sister of Emily Parati. Elizabeth was only, I believe, 20 years old when she passed away on Sunday. So...
Sad, a sad, sad story. So we will continue our evening with an executive session, interviews for the building inspector position. As many of you know, our longstanding building inspector, Mike Testa, is retiring, and in fact, there is a retirement dinner on his behalf a week from Thursday, on the 19th. If you're wanting to attend that, you should get in touch with Patty Dwyer, who's the...
Party planner.
Party planner. So Patty, Patty's contact info is on our website at Pleasantville-NY.com. So we're in the process of, pardon?
Dot gov.
Dot gov, right. I'm not doing well tonight.
You're all right.
Pleasantville-NY.gov. We're in the process of interviewing people who might replace Mike Testa. Big shoes to fill, so we look forward to having more to report on that. Is there a motion to adjourn the regular session and move into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Good night. We will look forward to being with you again in two weeks on the 23rd, and again, to remind everyone, that is the night when we anticipate, at the moment, having on our agenda the final vote on the benchmark senior living zoning change. Thank you and good night.